Good evening. I'd like to call the December 20th, 2016, Pacosa City School Board meeting to order. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, because our student board rep is not here this evening. He's at a Pacosa High School basketball game and we hope he's doing well. I'm going to go ahead and introduce this evening our pledge leader. Our pledge leader this evening is Annabelle Crockett. She will lead us in the pledge. Annabelle is in Mrs. Week's kindergarten class. She's the daughter of Mr. and Mrs. Christopher Crockett. Annabelle has a five-year-old sister named Breslin and she will be a kindergartner at PPS next year. Annabelle loves to play games with her dad when she is not at school and her favorite subject in her favorite subjects in school is art.
Please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And next, I would like to introduce our inspirational reader. James Holloway will provide the inspirational reading this evening. James is also a student in Mrs. Week's kindergarten class. He is the son of Mr. and Mrs. Ryan Holloway. James has a three-year-old sister named Penny. James also loves to play games with his dad when he is not at school. His favorite subject in school this year is PE. James will read a selection from How the Grinch Stole Christmas.
How the Grinch Stole Christmas. And the Grinch with his Grinch feet, ice cold in the snow, stood puzzling and puzzling how it could be so. It came without rubings, it came without tags, it came without packages, boxes, or bags. And he puzzled and puzzled till his puzzler was sore. Then the Grinch thought of something he hadn't before. What if Christmas, he thought, doesn't come from a store? What if Christmas perhaps means a little bit more?
Ms. Helsel, will you introduce the student presentation tonight, please?
Sure. The songs the students will be singing this evening are Deck the Halls and Jingle Bells, signed by Mrs. Week's kindergarten class from Pacosa Primary School. They are under the direction of Ms. Poto. Mrs. Week's class performed these songs along with another kindergarten class last week when they presented their holiday concert.
Deck the halls with bells of holly! La 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 la, la 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 la! See the season's to be jolly! La 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 la, la 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 la! Don't you worry, I'll care with him! La 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 la, la 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 la! Surely he'll shake your tired carol! La 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 la, la 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 la! Wow! Daddy's leaving us home! And one of our souls is slain! Away, here we go! And I'll be all the way! Ha ha ha! The love of Mary! Taking spirit and pride! While fun is to ride! Sing a sleighing song tonight! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells! Jingle all the way! All that fun is to ride! One more soul is slain! Hey! Jingle bells, jingle bells! Jingle all the way! All that fun is to ride! One more soul is slain! Hey!
Students and parents, we have just a couple of presentations we're going to make. We'd love for you to stick around just for a minute or two and then we would like to take a break and come out and visit with you and with the students before y'all leave, if that's okay. Thank you. Do we have any additions or modifications to the agenda?
We do not this evening. Before I bring up our first person we're going to recognize, I do want to let all the parents and other relatives in the audience know that this is recorded and it will be on our website. It may take till after winter break, but if you've got family and friends across the country or the globe, they can actually see the recording of this of your wonderful children. So I wanted to let you know that. It's all out of video and going on. At this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Jennifer Booth to come forward. Jennifer Booth is the volunteer of the month for Pacosa Primary School and for our school division. Between August and December, Jennifer volunteered 34, 35 hours overtime. Jennifer has been a volunteer at PPS for a few years now, serving in many capacities. She's an active member of the PTO and holds two offices, the Volunteer Coordinator and the Parliamentarian. Along with serving on the PTO in the two offices, she's a regular Helping Hands volunteer. Jennifer can be found most days in the Helping Hands room, working behind the scenes, cutting, gluing, laminating, and doing other tasks to assist classroom teachers. When asked what she enjoys most about volunteering at Pacosa Primary School, Jennifer says the teachers. And I quote, "The teachers have such a busy schedule, so I volunteer my time by taking on tasks to lessen their load. I want to relieve their burdens so they have more time for instruction." Jennifer, congratulations and we can't thank you enough and we appreciate all that you do for Pacosa Primary School. Please join me in recognizing her. Next, I'd like to invite Michelle Legan to come forward, please. Michelle is the Senior of the Month at Pacosa High School. Michelle is an outstanding young woman who has excelled academically at PHS. She's a member of National Honor Society, German Honor Society, Mu Alpha Theta, and Student to Student. Michelle is also a member of the Academic Challenge and the Model United Nations Teams. She is on the Lady Islanders Varsity Tennis Team. Michelle is not only academically focused, but has a real love for her community, which she has demonstrated by volunteering her time with Teens for Troops events, excuse me, our Helping Hands Club, Red Cross Club, Centerra Hospital, Dominion Village Retirement Home, and Vacation Bible School at her church. She plans to major in education and become a teacher. Very exciting for us in Pacosa. Michelle has applied to CNU, UVA, and William &amp; Murray. Please join me in me congratulating Michelle Legan, our Senior of the Month. Next, I'd like to ask Mr. David Hux to come forward, please. On behalf of the school division and the school board, I'd like to thank David Hux for his service on the board for the past five years and as vice chair of the school board for the past six months. As a board member, he also served as a board representative to the Pacosa Education Foundation. Additionally, he served on the New Horizons Regional Education Center Board of Trustees and most recently, he served as vice chair of that board as well. As a board member, he was engaged in developing budgets during challenging times. He also worked hard to ensure the board's relationship with city council was a positive one, which is why in part, he is well-prepared for his new role as a council member. David attended numerous school division events when possible as he watched his two daughters graduate from our schools. On a personal note, David has been a tremendous support for the school division and for me personally. His kind phone calls and email messages were always much appreciated. David, we are so very sorry to see you leave the board, but know that you have made a positive difference for our students, staff, and community. I know I speak for everyone when I say thank you and that we wish you all the best as you focus on your new position as a city council member. Please join me in thanking David for his service to the school board.
in the audience. We need our census of students to go up and you are doing great work, so thank you. Keep it up. And we're going to take a break and visit with you.[602.62]
We'll call the meeting back to order and for the financial update, we'll bring Ms. Woodruff forward, please.
Good evening Chairman Cast, members of the school board and Dr. Parrish. For the finance report this evening, I will review the audit reports with you. The FY16 audit was completed by Cherry Beckett LLP, who have been our auditors since 2009. We have two years left on the contract, so they'll be continuing to do that. There are several items that we receive as a result of the audit. The first is the city's comprehensive annual financial report, also called the CAFER, where the school division is included in this as a component unit. The second is an auditor communication letter, which describes the scope of the audit and confirms that there were no significant audit findings this year. On page 115 of the CAFER, the audit opinions are listed, and I'm pleased to report that their opinion was unmodified for the financial statements and federal awards, which is the best opinion that we can receive, so that's good news. In addition, the school division had no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies identified. If you look at page 115, it will say that there was a significant deficiency, but that was something on the city, not on the school division. There is also an activity funds report, and the activity funds are those funds that are held at the school level and the responsibility of the principal. For the activity funds, the auditors do not perform a comprehensive review of all the accounts. They review the year-end financial statements and prepare a level of test work to confirm that the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects for the cash receipts, dispersments, and ending balances, and that was the opinion of the auditors this year as well. The activity fund communication letter is a report of internal control deficiencies. You will note that there were no material weaknesses noted, but they did have, on the second page of the report, a few minor deficiencies noted. The first is a division-wide comment on segregation of duties. This is a district-wide comment, and it has appeared every year. We did make steps in January to revise some of the policies on the bank deposit and the bank statement process to try to alleviate this, but because of the level of staffing, they feel like we have a little bit of segregation work to do. There were also two comments at the high school, one being the bank deposit analysis report were not signed. We determined that with the new TRA system, there are two reports being printed, one was being signed, the other was not, but we have revised the process, so both are now signed. There were also instances where, at the high school, where teacher collections were not submitted to the bookkeeper on the same day. We found that this was related to athletic events that were in the evening, and then they were submitted to the bookkeeper the next day, so they were very timely and everything was secured that night. Overall, these are two excellent reports, and congratulations to the principals and bookkeepers for all their hard work. You do have all of the four documents that I spoke about, so if you have any questions as you review further, then please let me know. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Woodruff. Any questions or comments?
Yes, I missed what you said about the significant deficiency on the page 115. I think I was asleep, maybe I fell asleep, I don't know.
There were no significant deficiencies for the school division, but there are for the city. See, this is a combined report because the school is a component unit of the city, so the report is for both. So it says, yes, there were, but it was related to a city item, not a school item.
Okay, thank you very much.
Other questions, comments? Thank you very much. Mr. Pappas, will you come forward with the operations update, please?
Good evening, School Board, Chairman Cast, Dr. Parrish. In a few short days, school will end for this part of the year, and in the schools, not a creature will be stirring, with the exception of maintenance and custodial staff as we deck the halls with wax and we dash through the buildings pulling Cat 5 cable as we work to get our security grant up and working. Tonight, I decided to show you a little bit of our work with Aramark. Every month, we get together to do a financial performance and assessment of where we are, where we've been, and where we're going. Here you can see that revenue has been increasing steadily all year. Both breakfast and lunch counts continue to rise, and day-to-day à la carte sales, which means cash sales, are up approximately 8 percent. Over 450 families attended the Thanksgiving lunch. We had that, obviously, just a few weeks ago, and it was both at the primary and elementary school. It was very well received. And then, I think there's an image here, it shows you what breakfast in the commons looks like. It's a new addition this year, and students come in, they have an opportunity to quickly imbibe some delicious food and get a beverage of something to help them get through the morning. That's breakfast in the commons. Next, part of a partnership with Aramark is for them to be good community neighbors and be engaged. Here you see a picture of our high school kitchen staff, who work diligently to make a contribution to the Samaritan's Purse. And lastly, in 2017, Aramark will be rolling out some new menus with some exciting, limited time offers, so obviously, they'll be testing how students like the new things, like popcorn chicken and such. And PHS snack bar will open on January 3rd, and that too should help invigorate sales. And that concludes my operations report for the evening.
Questions or comments? Your Christmas story might not win awards, but we do appreciate it, so thank you. And yet, it might, so. Hey, do we have any public comment tonight? Oh, I'm so sorry. Dr. Fox, I skipped you, I'm so sorry.
It's all right, it's a hard act to follow.
Yes, I was so excited.
Good evening Chairman Cast, members of the board, and Dr. Parrish. My update this evening highlights student service in our schools. Gandhi stated that "The best way to find yourself is to lose yourself in service to others." An important mission of our schools is to prepare students to participate and contribute meaningfully in the community and the world in which they live. During this season of giving and Thanksgiving, it seems timely to highlight a few of the many ways our schools and students are providing service to those in the community and beyond. At Pacosa Primary School, students in all grades can donate 25 cents to wear a hat during the school day each Friday throughout the school year. The funds collected are donated to So Much Comfort, an organization that provides free adaptive clothing and comfort accessories to all wounded service members in all branches of the military. Last week, Pacosa Primary collected over 1,000 pounds of food during the Pacosa Education Foundation's food drive to restock the local food pantry. This spring, Pacosa Primary will hold a school-wide drive to collect basic school supplies and books for a needy school in Ohio that they are adopting. In addition to sending supplies and books, students will also have the opportunity to write letters to students in Ohio. At Pacosa Elementary School, students in the K Club, K Kids Club, are donating tons of yummy cookies to the police, firemen, and other emergency personnel in Pacosa to thank them for their service and sacrifice. The Student Council Association conducted a food drive during the Thanksgiving season and a new toy drive during the holiday season. Additionally, four times a year, the Pacosa Elementary School, SCA, will sponsor cleanup days for the areas they have adopted around the school, the fire department, and the Little League fields. Pacosa Middle School recognizes the importance of giving back to the community. Students in the Students Concerned About Restoring the Environment Club are committed to Mother Earth and meet weekly to collect recycled items. The SCA hosted a food drive from December 12th through the 16th to collect canned and non-perishable food items for those in need. They are also beginning to organize a fundraiser for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society, and the Pacosa Middle School Builders Club is in the process of stuffing large stockings with toys to donate to our community, and also worked at the Pacosa Seafood Festival to serve guests. Students from Pacosa Middle School donated $1,360 to the All for Books program as a part of the Scholastic Book Fair. Funds will be used to purchase books for the school library, and Scholastic Books will be providing a matching contribution to the Kids in Need Foundation. At Pacosa High School, the spirit of giving and helping is alive and well. The Helping Hands Club, spearheaded by Elise Gilmore, collected children's Halloween costumes to be donated to a domestic violence shelter in Gloucester. This project was highlighted by Channel 13 earlier this year for its positive influence in the community. The Pacosa High School SCA raised money for victims for Hurricane Matthew in North Carolina and is conducting a holiday project of collecting cards and holiday treats for first responders who are serving over the holidays. The Spanish Club provided and served food to the International Coast Guard visitors, and students are currently conducting a sock drive in support of the homeless. A school-wide drive was conducted by the Key Club and the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America Club. Together, they collected over 1,400 canned items for the local food pantry. The Key Club has also been volunteering by parking cars and serving as tour guides at back-to-school nights, ringing the bells for the Salvation Army's Red Kettle program, and working the concession stands at our middle school dances. The National Honor Society has assisted the Pacosa City Council at their meetings by setting up and ushering. They've coordinated an anti-bullying sidewalk chalk day. They conducted a clothing relief drive for the victims of Hurricane Matthew in North Carolina, where over two carloads of items were donated, and they're providing tutoring services to students who may need additional help and support. Lastly, the Teens for Troops Club sponsored Cookies Because We Care. This service project involves students and staff at all four schools and the school board office baking cookies for local troops. This year, we donated a total of 10,056 cookies to the Langley Officers' Spouses Club. This brings Pacosa's 11-year total of cookies donated to over 115,000. These examples are only a small sampling of the many service opportunities our schools are participating in this year. We think it's clear that our students are becoming civic-minded young citizens, and we hope the board and the community will join us in commending them for their efforts to make their school, their community, and their world a better place. This concludes my report for this evening. Thank you.
Dr. Fox, thank you. Absolutely, we should commend them. Any questions, comments? Great report. Now, is there any public comment tonight?
Yes, we have one. Ms. Judith Harris.
May I take your?
Yes, please.
I'm here to answer my spot. Thank you for allowing me to make a call, that's a very great. I'm Ms. Judith Harris, a Pacosa parent. I have two kids in the school system, which was a graduating senior. First off, I want to say thank you. We have a fantastic school district, and we're very lucky to live here, and I know my kids are without doubt getting a very, um, solid education.
All right, we just want to make sure it's on.
Okay, so anyway, I just want to start with, thank you. But what I'm here today to talk about is the Jefferson Scholarship Program and the nomination process. So I don't know if everyone on the board is familiar with it. It's a program from UVA, highly competitive, and it is a full tuition scholarship, along with four years of mentoring, possibilities to travel abroad, study overseas, and both of networking within the commission for years. An applicant may not self-apply, they have to be nominated by their license. So the concerns that I'm bringing tonight are just about Pacosa's nomination process. Now, I have met with Dr. Syed in his guidance office, and I have a meeting today. But I just wanted, I felt that it's important to make. They outlined their criteria very clearly, the characteristics they're looking for, what they think should matter, things that they would prefer not to matter, like personal situations financially. Not addressed, they're seeking the best of the best, and they rely on the high schools to follow their own outlined process. And by me their own, the high school gets to decide how they would like to move through the UVA, some of the schools do rounds of interviews, some do it over a six-month period. Six-month period, it's solely within the discretion of. The concern that I'm bringing tonight is just Pacosa's process seems unorthodox, and it was difficult to get a true picture of the people. And the examples that I have for you is that it didn't, there were some students that thought they were automatically considered, helped by guidance to say, hey, please consider me. There were some students that were told, oh, we'll consider you, give us the resume and a rap sheet from your parents. But without a doubt, it seems like it's only informed of what they can do, you know, to get into this highly competitive nomination process. Now, again, they're not winning the UVA scholarship, they, people, this was just that very token beginning step to get. Without a doubt, again, it seems like they were given different avenues and opportunities, and as well as what seemed odd is the nominee was chosen, and he was informed and started his process to tie down, he has to write essays, so on and so forth, and about two or three people went by, and then the day before the deadline, because I'm still not here on, a second committee was called. After I went with students, had their guidance, I went with the principal, a second committee was called, with a couple of different people besides the first committee, and then another student was seen to nominate. So I stand before you as one parent, but I have been contacted by multiple parents and, I am kind of the designated voice of many, that we just felt that it's important to move. Now, I've met with Dr. Parrish, and I'm very encouraged, you know, with process, this one to, you know, in the near future. Thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
We thank you for your time and coming forward tonight to share your comments. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Hey, Ms. Whitaker, could you lead us in the consent agenda, please?
Certainly, there are four items on the consent agenda, and for everyone's information, these items are always enclosed with the board packet. These items are approval of financial reports, approval of personnel action, authorization to dispose of surplus property, and authorization to change appropriation in accordance with attached requests.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Holcomb?
Aye.
Ms. Mosteller?
Aye.
Ms. Helsel?
Aye.
Ms. Sheeler?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. Other matters for consideration tonight, consideration of approval of minutes of November regular meeting, and the minutes are enclosed. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Ms. Whitaker?
Abstain.
Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Holcomb?
Aye.
Ms. Mosteller?
Aye.
Ms. Helsel?
Aye.
Ms. Sheeler?
Abstain.
Chairman Cast?
Abstain.
Motion passes four zero, three abstentions.
Okay, consideration of approval of second reading of changes to policy 2-2.3, advertising sales solicitation. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, we brought this to you at your last board meeting as part of first reading. Actually discussed this the month prior to that in your work session. What we did was made changes to this policy about advertising sales solicitation to make sure that our practice actually aligns with our policy. We did, or I did on behalf of the board, talk with our attorney, especially after, as you remember in the work session, as a board, you had some questions and wanted to make some changes. So what we brought forward to you for first reading was, included those changes, and they were based upon the advice of our attorney. So with that, I recommend this evening that you approve the change, policy 2-2.3, advertising sales and solicitation.
We have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any questions or comments?
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Holcomb?
Aye.
Ms. Mosteller?
Aye.
Ms. Helsel?
Aye.
Ms. Sheeler?
Aye.
Chairman Cast?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Dr. Parrish, will you kick off communication tonight?
Yes, I'd like to first officially welcome our newest board member, Ms. Sheeler, up here with us. She was just appointed to the board last week, so she had orientation meeting with me yesterday and was willing to stay late into the evening with me, which I much appreciated, but we're certainly excited to have you with us, and this was probably the quickest that we've had somebody appointed and gotten them up here on the dais, so thanks for joining us this evening. I did also, as I've mentioned to the board in the past, want to remind everybody that the governor did issue his budget proposal, both for this year as well as for next fiscal year, on Friday, the 16th. We did just receive the calculation tool from the Department of Education, so Ms. Woodruff will be working on that calculation tool, but we won't have any hard numbers out to you until January. At your work session, I will do a presentation, but I will also get information out as soon as we can about it. So at this point, we just don't know the actual impact on our budget in terms of what was put out in that proposed budget. And a reminder to the community that the governor's issued his budget, but then we'll also end up with a budget from the House of Delegates, as well as the state senators, and then ultimately from the General Assembly, so this is really just the beginning of a long process, but we'll get that information out to you as soon as we can. And I just want to thank everybody, all of our folks in the school division, our parents for your continued support of the school division, your hard work throughout the fall, and I wish everybody a restful, safe, and relaxing winter break, and believe it or not, we'll see everybody back after tomorrow in 2017, so.
Great, thank you. Dr. Fox, would you share communication from the schools?
Yes. From Pacosa Primary School, November and December were busy months. Kindergarten students studied Thanksgiving and how modern traditions differ from the past. As a culminating activity for this unit, all kindergarten students and lots of parents gathered in the hallway for their annual Thanksgiving feast. This year's feast, which was open to all students and family, had the highest. Pacosa Primary PTO sponsored a Barnes &amp; Noble Book Fair November 19th at the Jefferson Avenue store. Many parents and students shopped and helped raise over $600 for the library. Many thanks to the PTO for sponsoring the book fair. As a culminating celebration for the annual PTO walkathon, Ms. Grisco and Ms. Harper dressed as sumo wrestlers and wrestled each other in front of the entire student body. Students enjoyed this a great deal, and there were lots and lots of laughter and fun. Pacosa Primary also hosted its annual literacy night for students and parents. This year's theme was Read Like a Movie Star. During the evening, parents attended sessions on ways to foster literacy at home, while students enjoyed popcorn-a-movie literacy games. And lastly, congratulations go out to Mrs. Barton's class for donating over 300 pounds. At Pacosa Elementary School during their recent can drive, Ms. Stanish's and Ms. Knight's classes collected close to 250 cans each. They were treated to pizza this past Monday. The SCA sponsored the pot drive, which was a success with two large boxes of toys donated. Last Monday morning, the PTO sponsored an adopt-a-book program, every student being able to select a book of their own to enjoy. Last Friday night, the PTO held a family movie night in the cafeteria, and there were over 150 in attendance. Pacosa Elementary says thank you to the PTO for all of their hard work. Pacosa Middle School Band and Chorus held their winter concerts this past month. Their performances were outstanding, and they were extended for their hard work. The chorus students also performed in school-wide assembly on December 16th, and the band performed for third and fifth graders this morning. Students learned about the importance of doing community service by helping others in raising $1,300 for the All for Books program at the Scholastic Book Fair. This is a new school record, we mentioned it earlier tonight. On January 11th, Pacosa Middle School will host a pre-admissions criteria for the Governor's School Program, current meeting at 5:30 in the auditorium of. And finally, from Pacosa High School, this past month was a busy one. Our bullying awareness program continued as our anti-bullying committee guided our school-wide bull's-eye lesson highlighting digital importance of maintaining a positive digital footprint across platforms. Our Get It Together Buckle Up campaign is in full force, with our students participating in seatbelt awareness activities, signing a pledge to wear their seatbelt, random seatbelt checks occurring in the parking lot. Additionally, a mock accident scene was staged at Pacosa High School from Odd Road to raise awareness of what could happen if students do not wear their seatbelts. In the week of December 5th, students were exposed to the field of participation in the Hour of Code, conducting in both organized class activities and through opportunities for independent participation during their lunch periods. The arts are also thriving at Pacosa High School, as both the band and chorus students delivered stellar winter concerts, are prepared to share their talents with the entire school in a showcase that will occur tomorrow during the school day. Students in the adaptive art class produced beautiful images of fall leaves using crayons and watercolors, and auditions Snow White and The Prince. Our students continue to make their mark in the classroom, on their sports teams, on the stage, and in their clubs and activities. We wish everyone a safe and happy day break, and we look forward to, what, 2017?
Great, great report, thank you. Ms. Whitaker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a couple of comments tonight. First, I want to, I'm sure he's not watching or listening, but I want to thank David Hux for his service on the board. It has been a pleasure serving with him, and I have learned a lot from Mr. Hux. He was the kind of, is the kind of individual who sometimes sits quietly and gathers the information and lets everyone else speak, and then when he opens his mouth, just brilliant stuff out. And I am excited for the city that he is going to continue to serve. He will be on the council, I'm excited for all of us, because having been on the school board, I know he feels our pain, he knows what we experience, and I believe we will have yet one more person to fight for the school division, so I'm very happy about that. I welcome Michelle, I'm glad to have you on board, I'm very excited to have you with us. I'm also excited by the fact that if what I read was accurate, we had quite a few individuals expressed interest in serving on the school board. When I applied a few years back, it was really hard for the city council to decide between me and nobody, because there was only my application. So to know that more people are applying, more people are interested, I think is fantastic. It is a great board to serve on, and it's a great community to serve. And finally, I would like to thank Ms. Harris for coming out, bringing your concerns to us. I am intrigued by what you had to say. Dr. Parrish does a great job communicating with us, and I look forward to hearing her report to update us on your concerns, so thank you for coming out tonight. Thank you.
Rollins?
Not at all, exactly. Thank you, Ms. Harris, for coming out, and I fully echo.
I'll echo that, what she said, and no other comment, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to thank the children that, as well as congratulate those that were recognized. I would also like to welcome Michelle, I look forward to serving with you and echo what the other school board members said. David, I do want to thank you for your service to the Pacosa City public. He served with integrity and was a very good role model to me as I came on the board, and I wish him the best of luck with the city council. No further comment.
Ms. Helsel?
So I agree with all of your comments, and there's really nothing else I can say to trumpet at all, except for I hope everybody has a very happy holiday.
Thank you. Ms. Sheeler?
I'm very pleased to be here, and I appreciate the warm welcome seat. I look forward to the challenge.
And I did with Mr. Hux, you know, couldn't hear what I said to him, but I said, David, you're a great man, and he has really exemplified what we all should do, sitting on this school. So David, job well done, and I know you do a great job on city council. Ms. Sheeler, welcome. I had the pleasure of meeting with her right before Dr. Parrish did the full-blown orientation, and really enjoyed that, so welcome to the board, and like to commend city council for their process and for bringing forward such a great nomination for us, so thank you very much. Do we have any material for board review?
Not other than the material that Mrs. Woodruff noted for you, that you have all the audit materials in front of you.
Fantastic. Well, if nothing else, we will stand adjourned.